Budget session to order. So, welcome. This is our budget review schedule for, what are we in, 20, this is the 24, fiscally year 25? So, we have a slew of these slated for the next couple of weeks. So, we're going to kick it right off tonight with Brian. Why don't you go ahead and just give us an overview?
All right. Patty, you'll be the...
Yes, 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 yes. Okay.
All right. So, welcome to fiscal year 25. So, just to start off with some very brief general overview, Patty, you can move that slide forward. Thanks. So, you all have, this is the first page in your summary section, but just for the public's view also. So, this is kind of the overall summary of where we are. Some of the important numbers to note, so, starting at the bottom right corner. So, total cost, this is the increase in expenses. So, on the city side, you have about 5.8%. The schools will come in with 7.83. And the county, right now, you may have read the articles, is proposed at a 42% increase. That was just quite substantial. I'll say that I did attend the last county budget meeting last week to speak about the hardship it places on municipalities in the county to have a 42% increase placed on us. You see, that's about $405,000. That's a pretty big chunk of our overall budget, considering. So, they're going to be having an additional budget workshop to consider all the testimony they heard, and we hope that they do a little bit better than 42% for us. So, we're hopeful, but please contact our county commissioner or the whole county commission to maybe share some of your feelings about what it does to the city of Waterville's budget. And I know all of the towns and cities around the county are quite concerned about this. So, anyway, that's the bottom right corner. You see the total in expense increases for the year. The number at the top right corner is an important number because that's the actual increase people will see on the bottom line of their tax bills this year. Considering all of this as is, we're looking at about an 8.76% increase, which is still, I think, in our view, pretty substantial, and we hope that number can go down a bit prior to this budget being adopted and taxes being committed, obviously. So, that's the general breakdown here. I think we'll maybe take any questions as we go. So, summary page, any general questions there before moving on?
Is that 42, 43% across the board for all municipalities? Or is that somehow prorated based on the valuation, or how is that distributed?
I thought it was about across the board, but maybe some are a little bit different, right? I mean, it's...
They take your valuation?
Yeah.
And your valuation figures into how it proportions out? So, they may vary a little bit?
From what I looked at the list, though, they were all somewhat close. There's some variation, but everyone is facing a pretty decent increase.
So, I guess what I'm getting at, the latent question there is Waterville's valuation hasn't changed in a way that's at odds with other municipalities.
I don't think at odds with, no.
Yeah. Similar growth across the county is what we're seeing.
Yes.
Yeah. But just to add to that...
This is, you know, this is one of the things that TIFs can protect against. So, if our evaluation goes up, it's protected from increase in county taxes.
And that children's revaluation also helps us out, obviously, with state subsidy for schools and revenue sharing. So, that's the other point of putting stuff in TIF districts. Okay. Next slide, Patty. So, just a breakdown of where we are, city versus school versus county pie chart. So, we're pretty close. You know, city is 46, school 52, and the county does represent just 2% of our budget, but still that $405,000 is significant. Next slide, Patty. So, this is usually a major question that comes up. What are the major cost drivers? We're talking just on city side. So, the city increase, what's driving that? What are the major drivers? And so, we have a few things here. Number one is our collective bargaining agreements, police and fire. As you know, we're negotiating police with two different units, actually three communications also this year. Fire EMS, we're going to another year of their agreement, and these are pretty substantial personnel costs. Also, the non-union COLA for all the rest of the non-union employees, obviously, we're looking at a 3%. Last year was higher due to the cost of, cost of living, inflation, everything. We're going back down to 3%. Police vehicle leases, another driver. Public Works has requested another full-time equipment operator. This is to mainly add another plow route to better maintain roads during the winter, and also the city has grown over time, and they'd like to add another route on their plow schedule. Public Works road maintenance, there was a decent increase there when it comes to just costs for filling potholes, doing some shim coat on some roads that are a bit rough but not nearing on the paving schedule. The paint striping for lines is also in there. I don't need to tell you, this is a fairly important priority for the city. We are way behind on infrastructure. We are way behind on roads and sidewalks. I think anything we can do to, you know, start chipping away at taking care of our infrastructure is really important. So, that was another piece, but I think pretty important. Library came forward with a few requests for new staff. We did include on here three new part-time, just 10-hour-a-week library aides. They are working towards getting back to expanding their hours to pre-pandemic levels. I know there are many in the community who would like to see this, and Tammy, the director, has indicated this is really important for them, to be able to do this and to run the library safely, considering, well, a number of things that she'll probably explain to in her presentation. And then, of course, a full year of funding for new positions added last year. There were a number, if you remember, added, but just for half the year. So, now we're covering that additional half a year cost in this year, including the new positions in HR, IT, community development, and at the airport. So, those are some major cost drivers. There's obviously a lot of other very small, minor ones. You know, we could maybe get into much more granular detail later, but this is what's really driving the increase on the city side, that 5.3% that you see. Questions there before we move on to the departments, starting with administration?
Just for clarity, those, for the public, those positions in HR, IT, and the community development, the airport, these are people who are already working for us?
Correct. Current people in positions, yes.
And were they, were they budgeted for a full year last year?
Half a year last year.
They were budgeted for half a year.
And so, now, obviously, we need to cover for a full year. So, that, that's six-month difference is the increase you see on this year.
Yeah.
All right. Patty, thank you also. So, moving on to administration. Fairly straightforward, a couple of things I will just note. You'll see one major decrease under mayor and city council costs. So, this budget assumes, and this is a discussion point for us, the purchase of this building we're sitting in. And so, what's built into this budget is just three months of rent instead of 12 months, assuming we buy the building and we bond by September. So, this is, this is an assumption. This is an if. This is a discussion point. But just know that decrease you see there is with nine months of rent for this building pulled out, assuming we buy it. Some other changes, you see deferred compensation down quite a bit. That's because the ICMA deferred compensation of 457, Bill and I are no longer participating in. We're on mainstay retirement. That happened when, when I came in. Some other personnel things there, just with the change with me coming in. Moving down, we did add some small amounts to training and workshops, printing, and also training, $1,000 each there. Another, not really big ticket one I'll mention is festivals, events, and marketing. We did add $10,000 onto that. A priority for this council has been a marketing plan for the city. We intend to tackle that. I think even this amount budgeted is not a huge amount, but we're going to do, obviously, what we can with that amount. But I think adding some to that and being able to talk about all the good work happening here, the revitalization downtown, and everything that we've accomplished to date, you have to be able to get the word out. You have to be able to market the city, and so, we added $10,000 to that line. Moving down, part-time and temporary wages under city hall maintenance labor costs, you see the increase there. We did add eight hours for our custodian, assuming also taking care of this building, which is new. So, you see a small increase there. That's for those additional eight hours. We added a little bit to facility maintenance for city hall. It's a over 100-year-old building. There are a number of projects, maintenance needs, that constantly come up and sometimes surprise things that come up through the year, and we want to be prepared to address those.
Can you comment on the 38% increase in sewer and water versus utility hall? Why is that really great?
I think these are just, so, water is, there is an increase this year, a rate increase.
Yeah.
I think this is just preparing for what the utility bills are looking like and where they're projected to go in the coming year. You guys have anything different to say on that?
There's an 8% increase in water alone.
Kenneback Water is 8% rate increase this year.
And then, if you look at just the actuals through the end of January, we're on pace to get to that point, anyway, for expenses.
Ryan, could you say a little more about the maintenance, facility maintenance line? What kinds of projects?
For city hall.
Yeah.
So, we have a number of capital items we'll also be talking about. The building desperately needs paint. The building desperately needs some machinery work on the outside. The building needs new flooring in a number of areas. There are constant just maintenance needs on a 100-year-old building, and the budget is rather lean to take care of that. And as you know, deferred maintenance adds up later. So, we're trying to just be proactive in taking care of our facilities and avoiding, you know, deferred maintenance costs and things getting worse later on. So, I think it's about that simple. Professional services under general operating costs, you see a $15,000 difference there. This is regarding the website and Civic Plus ready, moving to the IT budget. So, that's just a shift there. Moving down again, you see, and I'm just going over the sort of the bigger numbers, the highlights. We're not going line by line, obviously, but any questions, just chime in. Council chamber facility rental, you see the big drop there. That's, as I just said, we're cutting out nine months with the assumption, again, a big assumption of purchasing this building, discussion point. And lastly, the council chambers renovation is obviously completed, almost pretty close to the budget we had laid out, but, you know, you know how construction projects go, so it was, it was pretty close, but, so that's disappearing from, from next year's budget. Any specific questions on administration?
Not anything that's presented here, but, and I realize that this is likely not the year, but I would like, since we have this opportunity, I would like you to talk about the utility of having sustainability coordinator in the city or director of communications. But the one in particular that I'm thinking about, like, the first of those would be a sustainability coordinator.
Yeah. I think it's a valuable position, if you want me to speak frankly here. You know, I think, I think one advantage of coming in, having, you know, done this somewhere else and sort of getting a, you know, sort of outside view of the staffing, the structure, the operations, how everything is going. You know, I can tell you, there's, there's two departments I do miss in Saco that I kind of wish we had here. Number one is the communications department. I think yesterday was a good example of, you know, the story that came out in the paper, and, you know, we spent a number of hours yesterday reacting and dealing with that. So, I think a communications director, you know, if we were to look at, you know, new headcount, I think would be really important. I think sustainability is another important position, but just, you know, my opinion, my view of working in this building every day and working with all the departments, I think a communications person would be, would be really critical if we were to think about adding one headcount. This may not be the year to do it, looking at the numbers, you know, that you've seen, but I think it's a needed position. I think, you know, Michael Hall is doing an incredible job in community development, but I think the economic development piece, which he's picking up on some, but we also have the growth council, is another area. You know, I think we could always look to be a little bit stronger. We have a lot of potential here, a lot of great work going on, and I think putting people in those places where we can really just, you know, really drive that forward is important. So, I think, you know, you could sit here for a few hours and talk about all the great things, you know, you could have, but what's really within reach in our budget, you know, this year, I think is fairly limited. So, I think if we're going to talk about adding even one headcount, that should probably be it, maybe. So, the question then becomes, what is the most pressing priority? If you ask me right here, I'm going to say a communications person. But that's not, that's not to say a sustainability coordinator wouldn't be great, too.
Well, what's the second department that you miss in Saco? Was that the same?
Economic development.
Economic development.
So, but again, there are a number of positions that a city, you know, could have, that'd be nice to have, but it's all dollars and cents.
I have one follow-up on, on the rental income line for the revenue on, on this building. This is presuming that we, we bond purchase, right? So, that's the three, last three months of the year.
So, three months of rent is built into this budget, so there's nine months not included here.
I'm sorry, say that again.
So, three months of rent through September is included in this budget, nine months is not. So, that's the decrease that you see.
Were you asking about the revenue?
Yeah. I'm asking about the revenue.
Oh, sorry, the revenue. Okay. People Salon.
That's the last three months of the year, presuming that's when we would take ownership?
That would be for nine months.
If we were to, yes, if we were to acquire the building, we'd have $2,800 a month from People Salon coming in for nine months. That's the revenue there.
Okay. I guess my, my, my actual question is, when would you anticipate taking, you know, ownership of the building?
So, if we, if we did the bond, the schedule that we've kind of talked about is we could complete that process by September.
Okay.
And potentially have funds to complete the purchase in September, late September, sometime in that timeframe.
Right.
So, that's, that's where these assumptions come in on those, those numbers of months.
Right. So, the three months you mentioned is for our rent?
Correct.
Gotcha.
But the other side, the revenue, nine months, $2,800 a month from People Salon, which is their current lease.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anything else before moving on? Okay. Austin Guay, you here? Okay. Yeah, sure. So, we'll move on to assessing. Pretty, pretty easy department here. All the departments are fairly, fairly easy, so. The only major change here is there's, there's an anticipation and a staffing change. You see a drop in the full-time salaries and wages line there and the corresponding FICA Medicare. Everything else, except for a small drop in, in printing of $100 that, you know, they've recommended, is, is fairly the same. So, Paul, anything particular you want to add about needs, priorities, how the departments run?
No, we've always lived by this budget and stayed within it, so I don't think that will change.
Can't blame tax increase on the assessors department, then.
No. No, it's going to be county budget.
Yeah. Okay.
Questions?
Any questions?
Nothing. Pardon?
Making a joke, what's the secret of your success, this efficiency that you've...
I guess I don't understand the question.
He's asking, how do you manage to keep it sold?
I'm saying, thank you, is what I'm saying.
You're setting a tough standard.
We just live by it, you know? Whatever we have to do in order to stay within there, we do. Whatever we have to do in order to stay within there, we do.
All right, so that was two minutes, that's pretty good. We'll see how the rest goes, so.
We gave you ten, we're making the time back.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Paul.
Welcome.
All right, moving on to City Cork. You want to, you want to join us, Patty?
Looks pretty cozy over here.
It is a little cozy. So under revenues, you see some changes. We do have some new fees for the Victuaries license, liquor license, and you see some growth in the marijuana also. Patty, just want to review those changes on the fees for the, those two.
Yeah, the City Council recently passed an amendment to the Licenses and Permits Ordinance that separated Victuaries licenses from liquor licenses. We now have tiers for Victuaries licenses based on the size of the business. So those were some slight increases in those license fees. And we also have a separate license fee based on the class of liquor license, for liquor licenses. So those went up a little bit as well. So some slight increases, not a huge impact. We don't take in a ton of revenue in our department.
Those were the major ones under revenues. Labor costs, you see some overtime, that's election workers, correct, Patty?
Yes.
Operating costs. I'll note, equipment, this is for some new election equipment, correct? Stanchions and some other costs?
Correct, yeah. We, we replace our equipment about every four years. Things break over time. We can get by in off-election years, but in big election years, like the upcoming election cycle, we need to replace some stanchions and tables and a few, a few items, so.
Other particular questions, looking at this one?
I have a question on the photocopies. I'm just curious as to why that went up by such a large amount. Are we charging more for photocopies? Are we expecting more photocopies?
Those are print costs. Photocopies and printing, we have to pay for the ballots to be printed, so we're printing a high percentage of ballots for the upcoming.
No, no, this is under revenue.
Oh, under revenue?
Yeah, it's line 30 on page 16.
Yeah. We reclassified some of our codes this year. So I'm unsure why that's such a hefty increase. I don't know if we lumped items in, do you recall, Christina?
I, I don't see some certified in some of your other things that you do.
Right, so professional services and clerk notary, those have no balances in them, so I think that they were lumped into that line item, yeah.
We can verify for sure.
Yeah, well, it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty clear when you look at the year before, I think, but we can certainly make sure that that's the case. Yeah, yeah.
Further questions on Cork's office? Thank you. Finance. Finance is another pretty straightforward one. There were some changes in just employee choices, health insurance, dental. I will say training and workshops. Christine, you want to talk about what was split out and that's why we see a change there? Is that correct? Page 20.
We evaluate based upon the needs of each and every year of individuals, so if we feel... Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Sometimes we cut if there's not a seminar or something that we plan on one of our members to attend, but it looks like we segregated. And the reason is we want to track the cost of getting to a seminar and all those additional costs beyond, separate from the cost of the convention or whatever they go to. We want a clear picture that it might have been $2,500 to register, but it took another $2,500 to fly them out there, to stay over two nights, so we can really have a true picture of what it entails when we approve these things.
So this corresponds with the travel expense line, correct? Right, so you see that change there?
Yeah, how did you manage to drop the health and dental?
We had one employee that transferred to another position within the city.
Oh, okay.
And the new person came, coming into us, chose a different plan that costs less money, so.
All right.
We were left.
All right, questions on finance? Okay, thank you. Health and welfare. So as you know, there is, I think a bill still pending in the legislature, or maybe it's not anymore at this point, it still is pending, to reimburse the municipalities at 90% instead of 70%. Obviously municipalities are a major proponent of this, so we will see what happens there. But that is, that is still pending.
So that would be like 50 grand for us?
It's about, it's about $26,000 or so. We budgeted last year for this, for this year with the 90% reimbursement because it looked really good at that point that it was going to pass the legislature last year and at the last minute, they axed it. So we budgeted for it. And then for this year's budget, for FY '25, we haven't budgeted for it because we don't want to count our.
But it's still out there pending, so that could be another small gift to us, yeah.
Maybe, small.
Contact your state senator or rep. Not a lot of changes in health and welfare. A miscellaneous expense, you do see $1,000 there. I believe this is for interpreters, for non-English speaking clients, is that correct, Denise?
Correct.
That was one change. Other than that, so the heating general assistance has dropped 1,000, is that? That's based on need?
Right, we had very minimal requests this year, so I thought we could drop it by $1,000. Plus, we were able to use other funding that the city has charities for heating costs, if we need to, so.
Because it wasn't so cold of a winter?
Yeah, we didn't get a lot of requests. I just don't, maybe that was it.
So other than that, Denise, anything else to add as far as just your operations, needs? Anything else?
No, I just, just make a comment. I guess we are always working with the unsheltered individuals in our community, trying to work and collaborate with, you know, the community partners to try to make sure that people are housed either in temporary housing or trying to direct them to look for permanent housing. So that's one of our, has been our goal since COVID, to try to get people in housing. So with the funding that the council had approved through ARPA, that was a big help this past year to help keep them in temporary housing because general assistance rules, you know, we have limited amounts of money that we can put towards temporary housing. So that money was really, really helpful.
In your opinion, is the city leveraging the kickback for GA, the 70% or 90% effectively? Is there any way we could, anything else that we could do to? I mean, I see it as almost free money. Like, we put up the money upfront, we get 90% of it back. Well, 70% now, like, right. If everything goes through, I mean, we're looking at 90%. So, you know, every $100,000 that we put out there in GA, we get, we get 90,000 back. So for a small investment, net investment of $10,000, we're able to do a lot more out there in the community. Are there any opportunities for us to do anything different, you think? If this was to, you know, if this goes through and?
Different as far as assistance-wise?
Yeah, I mean, anything that we can leverage, you know, being able to, you know, the more money that we can put up front, we get the money in the, you know, in the back end and.
Well, I mean, of course, it's all based on eligibility for the program, so we can't really say, you know, well, if we're getting 90%, we're only spending 10, you know, well, we'll, we'll give this person an extra amount. You know, it's all based on what they're.
It's the same criteria and eligibility, so that's the one, you know, limitation.
I know housing is a, you know, a brawler or that, right? So is there anything, you know, I mean, yeah, all right, something to think about.
So I'm not, I'm not really seeing where we get a 64% increase in this budget?
Yeah, I had that same question, I didn't see that either.
Because.
Is it the 90% last year or this year, the 75%?
Because it looks like there's less money allocated for assistance this year.
Yeah, I apologize, there's a formula error, so it's 16%.
It's what, 16? 16, okay, that makes sense.
Is that line one there?
Yes.
Top right corner, right?
Yeah, top right corner.
Okay.
No matter how many times you check the formulas, you'll always get one that's. And that's basically because of the revenue decrease, essentially. There's not a lot of, of actual increases in the budget as you see the labor costs. Well, the overall expense cost is 2.6% increase, so it's just in the, reducing the revenue that we thought we were going to capture at the 90% and then they didn't pass that legislation, so.
Right.
And that's why we've taken that out this year because I don't want to have to come back again next year and say they didn't do it again.
So the revenue is based on capturing 70%?
Yeah, line 16 is state welfare reimbursement. So, so the current year that we're in, we anticipated 90% reimbursement.
Right.
This is budgeted at 70% reimbursement.
Yeah.
And that 34K number up, up there is, is correct despite the 16% in line one?
Yes, that number is correct. That's the net increase in the budget.
All right, anything else on health and welfare?
I'm guessing, were there other staffing changes that led to the health insurance number being so low?
The health, oh, it's lower? Health insurance, 32 to 30.
That's just, that's just a normal increase in cost for health insurance. It's about $1,000 more. So there's no difference in staffing within that department for benefited employees.
Yeah, is it just because the department's so small? Because the other departments have like 40%, 43% increases?
So it all depends on employee choice?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we have open enrollment at the beginning of the year, employees can change their health insurance plan. So they may have gone, in some of those other departments, they may have gone from a single plan.
To a bigger plan, okay. So it's not a staffing change, it's just a health, just a plan?
Employee choices.
Plan choice, okay.
And in this, and in this case, the staffing has been stable for the benefited employees, so that's just the increase in the actual cost of the health insurance.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Denise, appreciate it.
Denise, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
HR? So starting under labor costs, you see anticipated retirements drop there just based on forecast for the current year retirements. Small change in dental, just again, employee choices. Employee benefits, workforce-wide, we have a $35,000 increase in our workers' comp. Bobby Joe, you want to say anything about that, our mod rate?
Yeah, mod rate has actually gone down again, but with higher wages comes a higher insurance premium, even with the mod rate going down. So that's what that increase reflects.
Miscellaneous benefits, small increase there. This is gym memberships, things like that.
Yeah, gym memberships, it could be for, if somebody needs something for ergonomics, those kinds of benefits.
Under operating costs, professional services, a small bump there. This is for, so some workplace investigations. We handle a third party coming in, for example, to complete that independent workplace investigation for us, so that's some of that. Medic on lab services, this is for exams at public safety departments, correct?
Yes.
Employee recognition, you see a $2,000 bump there. As I've spoken about many times, employee recognition is a really important piece of what we do here. So we've tried to do more with that. We had a really great employee recognition a day last fall, correct, that we had here? We're doing the barbecue in the spring. We've done the, the Years of Service Milestones Award Program. So we're trying to do more with employee recognition, good morale. You can never put a price on that. So I think this is small dollars to pay toward employee well-being and morale. So that's the small bump there. Have anything else of note, questions here? Bobby Joe, any other comments, needs of the department, anything else?
Pretty much business as usual in HR, so. Any questions?
Well, I mean, listen, we're here, like, we, your department's one of the departments, we're funding somebody full-time, so you want to talk about how, you know, how that person has, what, how your work has changed, having now had this person will be, you know, six months, yeah.
I've actually, my position was actually funded for the full year last year, so I've had my assistant since July of last year, which has been a life game changer for me. You know, we're, we're expanding our programs. We're getting caught up with safety training and getting policies and procedures in place that have been not kept up, kept up to date. Working with the departments more closely, which is really nice. I've been able to get out there and engage with the employees. So having somebody in the office allows that to happen. So it's been, it's been wonderful to have an assistant finally, so.
Yeah, I'll just add, in the last, you know, six months, we've taken a look and done a good review on a number of our policies that haven't been updated in quite a while and had, you know, just the opportunity to do a full review, solicit, you know, feedback. Some of them have been brought here that you've seen also. So I think we've done some great work on, on policies, for sure. Policies that haven't been looked at or touched in many years. So I think that's, that's one clear benefit.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. IT, Joel? So IT, as you know, is one of those departments. We did add another position, an IT tech. Funded half the year last year, funded for the full year this year. So that's where you see some of those personnel costs here. And corresponding, you know, dental health, you know, all that. Software support services is where I talked, I believe here. And so where we moved as far as Civic Plus Civic Ready, that's, that's here, correct, Joel?
That's in that line now, correct.
So that's what came out of administration to IT. So you see the, the increases there. Network maintenance repair, there's a bump there. This is for fiber on new poles, correct?
Yeah, probably the best example I can provide of that. Because we own our own fiber, we're responsible for maintaining it. If you take a drive up Main Street, you'll see a bunch of new poles, much taller than the ones that are there. It's our responsibility to move our existing from the old pole to the new pole. So it's kind of an anticipation of, of that. And you're seeing a lot of these new poles because you've got fiber to the home coming in from, you know, GoNetSpeed and Phidium and some of these other providers.
I think those were the major points. Joel, anything else to add, department operations, needs? How's it, how's it going with Phil, who's our new employee there in IT? The new one added this past year? How that's maybe changed, the question we just heard before, your operations?
I'll actually echo a lot of the same things that were just said. It's, it's been, it's been great. So having that extra staff, we, obviously, we've been looking for that help for the last few years. We finally were able to get. We finally were able to get that and we've already seen the difference. So it's giving the current staff and existing, the current staff an opportunity to do some more professional development, which we didn't have time, time for before. Focus on some of those policies. Again, I know you saw one or two of the ones that we've recently done just back in February. So just getting caught up on some of that stuff, bringing some of these things more current that are wildly out of date.
I'll just touch base on that too, simply from the, from the ticket perspective. So one of the departments that I was overseeing before as the administrator, assistant manager was IT. And every, I guess we were meeting every couple of weeks, every month. And I'd review their ticket list of problems that they were dealing with. It used to be two pages and this is like in like a six-point font almost of issues that are out there that they're responding to and trying to fix. Now it's a half a page. And that, and that tells you the effectiveness of having that third person. You know, having that, that one additional person really makes a big difference in getting those things done and accomplished, which obviously IT touches everything in the city of Waterville, plus all of the other communities that we support. So there's definitely been a big difference in that. And the professional development, excuse me, that Joel talked about, they simply couldn't do it before. And now they can. You can send one person off for, for a day of training, which I think makes a big difference, not just for their professional development, but also their, their morale, to be honest with you. They're keeping up on current trends. You know, we're implementing other things that are out there. The cybersecurity trial run that we're, we're working with, is it UMA that we're working with them?
Yeah, actually just got, just got more info on that today. So we're hoping to rekindle that very soon.
And a pilot program there. So, you know, where they're going to map our network and try to attack it and show us where the weaknesses are, things like that, that haven't been able to have been done before without that third employee. So...
I also just want to add, because many in the public may not realize this, but we have contracts with a number of other towns, police departments, libraries. How many, Joel? Other, you know, they're not just handling the city of Waterville here. You're handling...
So we've got the town of Clinton, town of Fairfield, town of Winslow, town of Oakland, police and fire, and KVCOG.
Right. In addition to what they do here with the city. Okay. Questions, comments?
So lines 16 and 17, can you just explain the difference between contracts and reimburse other towns?
So you're looking at that 23,000 there and through January of '24?
Yeah.
So the, the contracts are the actual service contracts that we have. And then the reimbursement is the incidentals that may come up that we end up eating that cost and then we turn around and get reimbursed on the other side.
Okay. So this is unbudgeted services that you're providing that you get reimbursed for?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Thanks.
Good. Anything else?
Tom?
What percentage of your time is spent on these other communities across the three of you? Just looking at that 78, wondering what, what that represents in terms of your effort?
Without doing kind of an analysis of the, the closed tickets over a period of time, I would be speculating, but I would say it's probably a third.
So the majority of your work is in the city?
I would say the maj, yeah, by far the majority of the work is, is in the city. And then, you know, Winslow's probably a, a second. You know, Clinton's like a distant fourth or fifth.
Yeah.
It's really...
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to non-operating expense, page 30.
Bring him back. You can bring him back. Joel, can you come back to it for one second?
Sorry about that, Joel. I was wondering to the mayor here whether we're, we're charging enough. Do you think that we are getting reimbursed enough for those services? If it's taking you a third of your time and then, you know, it...
Well, I mean, I think we've seen a lot. I mean, we, with, between the schools, the county, the costs have increased. You know what I mean? And so do we reevaluate that on a yearly basis? How, like, our contract, I know that we, they've come before the council. I don't know, are they yearly contracts or are they multiple-year contracts? I, I don't recall off the top of my head. But, you know, I mean, this is always budget season, it's always a good time to kind of refresh and see, you know, are we charging the right amount, you know?
Yeah, I would, I would have to double check on that. I believe they were all multi-year contracts. But certainly it's always worth looking at.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if your, if our total labor cost is 258, 78 is, is roughly a third of that cost. So...
Yeah, I'll, I'll weigh in on that too because I worked with Joel last year with the contracts with the communities. There really wasn't a set rate per hour that was charged previously. It was kind of just a...
Per service.
Kind of a dart throw. So Joel did a, did a ton of work on the contracts and tried to track how many hours are we, are we serving this community, that community, that organization? And so then we developed a, a per-hour rate to charge, which is still less than you're going to get, you're going to get charged if you go out to an outside consultant.
Of course.
But it's more than what the cost, it covers all of the costs for our employee cost per hour, plus some additional. And so we did do that last year. I think that probably we'll do that again next year is to look at, okay, where are our wages at? We've added this third person. You know, what's the work, work product look like? How long does it take? You can just update that information next year for us to look at that again, to say. But I know that they are multi-year contracts. I think we're might be in year two.
That sounds right. Without looking, I believe that's correct.
Yeah. So some of those communities, those contracts in some communities went up. There was, I know one community actually went down for their, for their cost because we looked at it and we went, well, we're not spending the time in that community that we thought we were spending. So... And then those contracts also, they're, they're for a fixed cost for a fixed number of hours. And if we spend more time, then, over those hours, then we charge by that rate. So that's, that's the cost of the contract.
So the contract is the minimum?
Yes.
Thank you again, Joel.
Thank you.
Quick run.
Okay. So moving on to non-operating expense. So the major point here on this sheet and discussion point is, I'll just say, so from what the department submitted in, after all of our meetings and what they, they submitted for their requests, it was actually about $1 million higher overall than what you're seeing in this document here. So we got all those requests and we spent time cutting about $1 million out already. So that, that's already happened. So part of that, one of those items was, you'll see under outside agencies here, there's a $50,000 line you're probably familiar with. This was the line that I think a committee used to meet to discuss where $50,000 could go to third-party outside groups outside the city for funding. So that is not included in this budget, that $50,000. It's a discussion point. It can be. It can be moved back in. It can be a different number. But in an effort to trim down to what we already have here, we found about $1 million. And that was one of the things on, well, the chopping block, we'll say. But it could, certainly a discussion point. So that is not included in this budget, that $50,000 for the outside organizations.
And what organizations have that, has that been historically? Remind me, please.
I think it's been for a number of different, right? Maybe you're...
So it's all the organizations that got funded out of ARPA money because that's how we funded this line last year? So all the ones we're, we're discussing funding tonight?
Yeah.
So on the next page, you'll see these are all the requests, all of them in total, requests that we have gotten in this year, requests for funding. So you can see what the ask is in total. It's about 40, it actually comes out to 49,600. So very close. This does not include, for example, what we give to KVCAP, AYCC, and Waterville Creates. Those are separate lines. This is just that $50,000 for all other third-party outside organizations. So the request for fiscal year '25, you see there totaling 49,600, including Kennebec Behavior Health, Kennebec Meson County Trails, Lifelike, Maine Public Television, Northern Light Hospice Care, Waterville Soup Kitchen, and Waterville Community Land Trust. So again, a discussion point, whether we want to fund any of these, all of them. What you think we should do with that line, this is something we'll have to discuss. But here's the, the whole list in total of all the requests that we got in. Questions or anything on that before we can move on? There's some discussion out right here. It's called a sidebar, I think.
So this does not include a potential bond for this year, correct?
Well, we're going to talk more on that later, yes. When we get to capital, we're going to talk more about TIF bond, all that stuff.
Okay.
Yep. So anything, any questions on the, the outside organization funding? Okay. So, but that's the full list. Moving on, non-operating revenues. So the property tax revenue, this is, you know, a placeholder for now. This number, we'll see where we come in. Moving down the interest on, on taxes, this is, there's a reduction there. It's based on, on actuals, what's been happening in previous years. Moving on to other revenue, you see a drop, the miscellaneous there. This, this was a coding issue again, correct, Christina?
Yes.
Okay. So that's where, why you see those changes there. Another major discussion point is under use of other funds, use of unassigned fund balance. So you saw, well, you used $2 million last year in unassigned fund balance. There is an additional $450,000 in the budget this year. Now, we are currently approximately about $3 million over our 12% for fund balance, which is what we have by charter, I believe. So this is a discussion point, though. I think the use of fund balance to kind of, you know, balance the budget, so to speak, is, is always a discussion point. We have a really healthy fund balance right now. So it would seem to make sense to, to put in a little more of that in, in hopes of reducing the overall, you know, budget. But that's, that's a discussion point. But we have the audit presentation actually coming up here pretty soon. So we'll hear more on that. But this budget does assume an additional $450,000 in the use of unassigned fund balance over last year. So that's another major point here. Again, the TIF stuff, we're going to get into more when we talk about capital in a couple of weeks. We'll, we'll dive more into, into that and also talk about bond. So further questions on, on this section? Okay. What time is it?
6:28.
Perfect. Well, we have seven o'clock, right? Well, we can start.
We can start. Yeah, we're going to do, we're going to take a break right now to switch the room over and Chad's going to do his thing. And then we will start here in probably a few minutes with the new, with the city council meeting. All right. Stay tuned.